Dean, and thank you all for coming, and Merry Christmas to all of you that are here with us tonight. Sure see some nice Christmas dresses and whatnot. Unfortunately, we've got some Christmas hats over here, too. And you do know it as Ba Humbug, right? Okay. But anyway, welcome to the December 13th, 2012 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Pastor Mike Park of New Covenant Church in Longview. Would you please stand?
Good afternoon. Mayor Dean, before I start, I just wanted to let you know, and this esteemed council, that the church that I attend and the Christian school that we're over have adopted many of you as adopted leaders. They are praying for you diligently and consistently, and many of them are praying for you at this very moment because they know I'm here. So I wanted to let you know that before we pray.
Great, thank you.
Father, we come to you tonight. We thank you, Father, for this year of events. We thank you for this year of business. But God, I ask that tonight that you would give these council members and this mayor the Spirit of wisdom, Father, to conduct the business that you have set them over. I ask that you, Father, that as they are diligent about the offices that have been entrusted to them, that you will give them the Spirit of unity in the areas that they have to deal with. And I ask, God, that they will complete their business at hand this year, and that you would provide them rest for their bodies, rest for their minds. I ask that you would give them a great time of holiday vacation with their families, and I ask that you would richly bless each one of them, Father, as they finish this year strong, provide the momentum to start the next year. I ask that you be with each and every one of them, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much, and make sure that the children know we appreciate it as well.
I will, thank you.
Citizen comment. Brandon Johnson.
Greetings, how are you all?
Fine.
Merry Christmas to you, and if I don't see you, Happy New Year. Brings me great cheer to present to you all in this meeting here in December. I still haven't changed my stance on the concerns I've addressed over the previous few meetings, but I did notice one thing that maybe I failed to bring to your attention, and that is a potential task force out of the I-20 corridor idea that came from our Vision 2015. And I know there's been several task forces. I noticed in the paper today the Animal Shelter Task Force has been meeting, and they're coming to a conclusion, or lack thereof, from what I'm seeing.
No, 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 no.
So I would encourage you all, if it's not at least a city council task force, a mayor's task force for the I-20 corridor. As you know, there's been a new business alliance that's now possibly going to open up to other areas, because other cities have seen the concern that they've had in areas where there's been a lack of economic development. So that task force, even in its first two months, is now moving to two other cities in our region. And if the spark for economic development will help at all, something, David, I know you're interested in, is tax-based dollars. I think that this committee could help bring money into Longview. And I am kind of tired of the lines that appear to be drawn. I heard one man speak a couple days ago about, "It seems like the Mason-Dixie line runs right through Longview." And if you've been here any time, you know that there is some things, some old ideology that should die, that has yet to, when it comes to regards of certain areas and places people don't go to because they hear some false rumor or some old rumor about what goes on in certain places. But having said that, and knowing that there is, or appears to be, a divide, you all representing the six districts of Longview, and Mayor, you kind of bringing this thing together, let's get down to it and really start talking unity. Let's start looking at the three areas in Longview, the west, the southeast, and southwest part of Longview, and bringing that up. Because I really think if we grow these areas, these major access points to Longview, we'll grow the entire city. Again, I-20, 259, Highway 80, these access points into the city are the major thoroughfares. 259 from the north is pretty limited, when you're talking Dangerfield or City. I mean, God bless them, I love people from that part of the region, but there aren't that many people there. But if we start growing this southern and western region, and maybe creating a task force to look at this, I think we can come to some solutions.
Okay.
All right.
That's an interesting concept, and, you know, hadn't really thought of it in that term, but we'll definitely talk again about that and see if we can maybe get something. Hopefully, we're in a recovery mode for our economy, and now's a good time to start, you know, planning some of those types of programs. So, Brandon, thanks for coming. Juanita Powell.
Good afternoon.
A good evening.
Good afternoon.
And happy holidays to all of you. He almost did what I needed to do when he spoke just now, but my concerns here, I've been here almost three years now. I'm from the state of Hawaii, served well, and I've traveled all over the country, outside and inside. I'm having problems. I've had to move twice since I've been here because of crime, being broken into. All those big cities I was in, I never got broken into. I was born here in Longview, and I never saw it like it is. And the area of South Mobley and Idlewood is a constant crime area. Noise pollution that's beyond me, and it's right across the street from Watts Elementary School. That's another issue, because that school is not being kept appropriately for the time that we are in today. And the other situation that I've noticed, there are dilapidated homes that just disfigures the whole neighborhood. There's churches on Mobley. I read or heard somewhere that they were trying to look into enhancing and doing a facelift for the entryway. But the houses need the facelift. And the type of people that is being placed in these dilapidated homes, there are several homes that have burned up just last week, and nobody knows what's happening, why that's happening. Oh, sure, they are old homes, but the landlords that have those old homes do not do anything to update them and keep the neighborhood. I used to ride my bike down Idlewood. The most beautiful cright myrtle trees that I've seen in my life today is full of trash, beer bottles, and any other thing that you might not want to see, and dogs running loose. I own a dog, but he's a house dog. He's too expensive to let out in the street, because they've been stole him once. They've broken in my house twice. I went out and did my own search. That's how I find them. Also, I rode through the community. I see what the cops miss in the neighborhood. Windows being shot out, guns being shot. So I just want to lay that on your heart. This is Christmas. We've got to think about how we're going to make a difference next year. Thirteen is a good number. Let's try it.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
And you can contact me by telephone.
There you go. Got your number right here. I was noticing that area code.
Eight oh eight.
There you go.
Proud to be from Hawaii, because it's too cold here.
Oh. Okay, that's all the speaker cards that we have. Next item is presentation items. Item A, Presentation of the City of Longview's Application to Become Recertified as a Certified Retirement City. Betty Kirby.
Good evening. I am Betty Kirby, and I have served on the Certified Retirement Committee for three years. In 2006, the City of Longview conducted a community-led strategic planning process called Vision 2010. Several goals were identified, and one of those major goals was to position the City of Longview as a retirement center and destination. The first Certified Retirement Committee was also formed that year, and of course, through the efforts of that committee, Longview was so recognized and certified by the Texas Department of Agriculture as a Certified Retirement Community. That certification is for five years. That was 2007, it's now 2012. So this year, the sitting CRC Committee has focused on updating all of the information, gathering many facts that just promote the City of Longview, and particularly recognizing it as a Certified Retirement Community. So we are in the process, or finishing up, maybe I should say, of reapplying for that certification. Our mission tonight is just to advise the council and other such departments as appropriate regarding issues affecting this city certification process. Why attract retirees? Texas is the second most popular state for retiree relocation. There are an estimated four million retirees each year. There's dedicated income. We call it mailbox money. Actually, I think now it's called direct deposit, but it's social security money, it's savings, it's pensions. When retirees or someone relocates to Longview, they purchase houses, they pay taxes, and they create jobs. People over 50 represent, or account for at least 70% of tourism spending. Relocated people, and particularly seniors, provide volunteer community service leadership, and they create dependable, part-time, as well as full-time workforce. The certification process is, of course, administered by the Texas Department of Public Safety, excuse me, Texas Department of Agriculture. I almost got that wrong. It's a three-part application. There's assessment of the city, there's a marketing plan, and long-term plan. Now, the cost for providing this is 25 cents per population. So this year, the cost to us will be a little over 20,000, but when you spread that over five years, it's 4,000. And we think the return of that investment certainly qualifies us proceeding. The assessment process is 14 areas, and if you look at all of these areas, anybody wanting to relocate to the city, and particularly a senior, those would be the priorities. They would be calling to find out what we have in education, what our health care is. So each member on our committee this year took one of those areas. We fanned out across the city, and we just had more fun updating the detail, and we were surprised at how much we have gained in the past five years. So we put together that assessment. So then we come to our accomplishments. As far as marketing, the CRC has been involved in a variety of marketing efforts, including local, state, and nationally. Longview participated, along with the Texas Department of Agriculture, their Retire in Texas program by attending the AARP National Convention in Orlando, Florida, last year. So what better place to go and advertise Longview and what we have to offer than with the AARP? We've developed a website, or have a website, that's called Retire in Longview, and of course, this is supplied with information that if somebody just goes online and they pull up retiring in Longview, they would find a lot of valuable information. And of course, we do print and online advertising, Google advertising. We have put advertising in many trade magazines. Our community engagement, we have made presentations to several of the local civic organizations, and the Senior Expo that is annually hosted by the Longview News Journal. We've participated in that each year. We provide coffee, and we meet and talk to the people that are attending, and we usually have a survey. Last year, it had to do with, "Why did you retire in Longview?" Or, "Why did you want to retire in Longview?" This year, our questionnaire had to do with likes and dislikes of Longview. So we gather that information, put it together, and then that provides information for using in other venues. We've hosted two community meetings. We invited the individuals and organizations that work directly with seniors to discuss the needs of seniors and see how we can keep them or get them engaged within our community. And then, of course, we've partnered with the Longview News Journal that publishes quarterly that Young at Heart publication, and actually, one of the members of our current committee was the featured story in their last January. And Jim and his wife had come to Longview, and they came because of family, and that's a lot of the reasons that many seniors do retire, is because of family. But then there's also those that want to get away from the cold, and many other reasons. And of course, we feel that Longview has a lot to offer. Community improvements and long-term planning. The committee has made a concerted effort to promote the improvement of amenities and service for seniors. We've engaged SEC planning to conduct an assessment of Longview from the perspective of a senior citizen and what would attract retirees. And of course, seniors continue to benefit from capital improvements. We're so good to see nice sidewalks. We love the wide streets. Seniors need wide streets to drive on, you know? So these are great things, our parks and our downtown opportunities. Our long-term, we have several strategic goals, but I think one of the most important things is that we continue to need to educate our public for preparing for an aging population. We must take care of our seniors. That is an important thing. Since our first certification, Longview has experienced an increase in the number of developers that are interested in building housing targeted to retirees. We have three major developments going on right now in our city, and these will offer independent living as well as assisted living. So we feel that we've made great strides in this area. The Certified Retirement Committee loves the city. We're interested in our seniors. We want to do whatever we can to promote them to come to Longview and then be engaged in our community. So, Mr. Mayor and council, we've actually finished our reapplication process. It's over, I think, 200 pages. We scored ourselves, and we know we've got 175 points out of a possible 185. So after this is signed by our mayor, it will be sent to Austin, and we are sending it fully with the expectation that Longview will once again be a Certified Retirement Community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Mr. Frost.
Ms. Kirby, and they're one of the ones that moved here, retired here because of family, and she was here too long, and she came to our church, and I recognized her bill pretty quick, and I got it on the retirement committee, and so she's...
Done a great job.
Done a great job, but the committee has done a great job. All that data, man, it's something else. The way they gather the data and assign it, and put it all together, and of course, Sean is one of the shovels around and gets you to the right place, but they have done a great job. I appreciate it very much.
Well, I mean, Ms. Kirby went over some of the statistics about our retirees, but there are a number of projects that are going on in and around the community at this time that are dedicated toward our retirees. So hopefully, we'll continue to see more projects in the future. But again, thank you to the committee, and thank you, Ms. Kirby. Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Richard.
Meeps and peeps, as we know them up in Spring Hill, are just a fabulous asset for our city, and it's been a pleasure getting to know them, and we're glad to have you here. And do you have any friends that you could get moved along with, like you, to get involved?
There you go.
All right. Thanks again for your efforts. Y'all are great.
Okay, thank you. Next presentation, update on Street Bond Project. Mr. Bonds.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is the Johnny Manziel of the City of Longview.
That's right. Gigamaggies.
Gigamaggies. Now they can crow. Oh, my. Oh, my. Sorry, Mr. Bonds.
That's fine. We'll go over briefly the update to the 2011 Streets Bond Election that took place in May of 2011. I think most people are familiar with this timeline. The vertical line represents the current time or moment in time that we are here, almost 2013. The diamonds represent where we are on each of the projects. As you can tell, most of the diamonds are ahead of the line. The only one behind is Green Street. That would be the section from Cotton down to Young, and the sidewalks are almost complete, but I'll tell you a little bit more about each one. The old dirt roads, we've, in our second phase, and almost complete with it. Magnolia Street is 50% of the final design is done. We're already starting to work on some of the right-of-way. Downtown Green Street is 13% construct, complete on the construction phase. Center and Methvin are in very preliminary design phases. We're almost finished with the design phase on the intersections. TexDOT is looking at the plans right now. We think they're done, but we have to get their blessing. So one more tract of land on right-of-way on that project. Cotton Street is 95% on the prelim. Hollybrook, we're all finished, ready to go. Waiting on SWEPCO to move some large transmission lines. They think they'll be done in June. Fenton Road is about halfway done, and we've started some right-of-way negotiations. Like I said, the Green Street from Cotton down to Young has some interesting right-of-way.
Yeah.
Yeah, we really don't have any right-of-way in a lot of the areas. So anyway, about 35% done with that. Doing a lot of surveying. Done the repaving jobs, and like I said, the sidewalk job is almost finished. But sidewalks, if you guys are familiar, it started at almost Cotton Street, and it goes all the way to Interstate 20, and on Bird Song from Mobley over to East Monroe. And the north-south section is complete, and almost complete with the east-west, and there's a photograph of the guys pouring concrete. This is a photograph of Green Street from Cotton. It's the underpass. If you're standing on Cotton looking north, what it looks like. This is the north side of the underpass, and interesting drainage facilities we're having to deal with, but almost getting that done. And this is actually from the overpass looking towards Cotton. We've built a pretty good-sized retaining wall around the First Baptist Church, and building a retaining wall against Manis Furniture here.
Keith, did you say we'd have a little more clearance?
Going to add one foot. That is a little bit.
Well, that's still...
This bridge structure here, we don't really know what's going on underneath there, so we didn't want to excavate too much in addition to that, so...
The next overpass down on Green Street going south?
It's like 13 feet.
It's 13?
Yes, sir. Well, no, no, I'm... The one that where High Street crosses this same railroad is 13.
I'm talking about...
On Green Street, it's 10 also, so that's right. So it's really not...
Have we ever had anybody run under it?
Yes. Yes. Not any city folks in a while, but since we moved...
Not any city folks.
We moved our facility from Thompson Street, so... But this is the old dirt roads, and you see, this is Phase 2. They're kind of scattered all around town. This is Dundee Road, and I'll talk a little bit about what we did, but these are the streets that we did all over town, Arrow, Aztec, Bosco, Avenue A, Clemmons, and Ney. There's some photographs of the overlays. Kind of hard to see. Asphalt is black, but, so it's not very good photographs. But this is Dundee Road, and had some concerns with some of the citizens that live along Dundee Road. And this is a couple photographs of what we did out there. We just added three foot of shoulder on each side. So the road was about 20 feet wide, and so we're trying to get it about, the minimum is, most rural section streets, we like to have them about 24 feet. So we've got it near 26 feet wide, and what we'll do, we'll put a complete overlay on top of it. But we're not going to do it right now. We're going to do it in the spring, and there's a couple reasons why. It's hard to lay asphalt after December or so. It has to be 40 degrees and rising, and our days are really short. And the other reason is we're patching all the rest of the streets in town that are part of that same program, so...
Keith, so that project, I know Mr. Tom Hayes has been here several times, so have you spoken to him about what we intend to do there, and what was his response?
He just wants it done. So, yesterday, but we're working on it as fast as we can. So anyway, with that being said, that's all I had on that. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions. Mr. Allen?
I've got a question. Keith, could you run us a copy of that completion record you showed first?
Sure.
That, I mean, not, that you put in a box, maybe, or something?
Sure.
That we could look at?
Maybe that and this particular explanation as well.
Email.
Good job. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discussion item. Discuss and provide direction concerning request for proposal options for selection of a consulting firm for the development of a comprehensive plan review. Chuck Ewing.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Have I got a deal for Mr. Johnson? He mentioned the south, the I-20 corridor, and that's what we're talking about when we talk about plans and bringing these things together, and I'll go into some depth on that, so... Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't project well, I get that. Just a quick overview, we'll talk about the comprehensive plan, what that is, just give a quick overview of that, the concept of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, what that might look like. Certainly, we'd like direction on that from the council, and then the timing for requests for proposals if council chooses to move forward with this project. Really, a comprehensive plan is a long-range document. It's looking out 20 to 30 years, identifying the vision for the community, and bringing all the pieces of that plan together to reach that vision. It's community-based. The intent would be to have community meetings, surveys, take all the data possible and bring together to move towards, and find ways and strategies to move towards that vision. That's the basic concept. We would take existing plans. Currently, these are a list of the plans that we currently utilize. Take those plans, find out, update them, and then find out how they complement each other. The intent would be to bring these plans together, to find projects, strategies, business plans, whatever you want to call it, and what do they share that will carry the city towards the same vision within the plan itself. So the part of that process would be to update these plans and bring them together to complement each other. Plans that could be created, and again, all this is based on, you know, the needs of the community and the desires of the community through the visioning process. Could include a revitalization plan. So we'd look at different sectors of the community as well, these sector plans, look at those areas that have similar characteristics, and what are strategies to improve, change, to move them. We'd look at growth corridors, annexation, all of those items, and bring those together, and again, identify those strategies that move towards that vision, and what are those plans? Typically, what we've done in the past is just have several different plans, but they don't really complement each other. They may be heading in different directions. They may not be all heading in the same direction. So the intent would be to bring that together, and that could as well include historic preservation and neighborhood development. So basically, that's just a quick overview of what a comprehensive plan is. And again, if you have any questions, or feel free to stop me, because I know I move fast, so... Of course, the intent would be for this process to be led by a Comprehensive Plan Committee. This would be a city council-appointed group. I believe the initial plan was to have nine members. We'd also recommend that this group include membership from specific boards and commissions, maybe the chair of that board or commission, say, planning and zoning, parks and rec, those that have a vested interest in all these plans, or they could appoint a member themselves to serve on that committee as well. We would ask that that committee be appointed in January, as determined by the Council Appointments Committee, based on the recommendations from council as well. The next step, of course, would be to identify consulting firms that would assist in this. These are firms that specialize in development of these plans, specialize in, you know, coming in. The largest, the most difficult part of this is going out and seeking the information and the data, and getting those community meetings together, and creating processes to make those effective. to make those effective. Certainly, in the past, in our parks and rec, we do a community-wide survey. That would be included as well. But then take that data and bring it together with those community meetings and, and create, again, processes and, and a time for them to, to come up with the big dreams, those ideas that they want to see, you know, and, and see what, and their ideas of what we're going to look like in, in 20 years. Of course, the, we'd ask the comprehensive plan committee to, to review those proposals from the, the consulting firms, and would anticipate the beginning of the process, hopefully in the spring or summer, again, with your direction. So that is just a quick overview. I'm sure any other information as we go forward will...
Questions? Question, Mr. Frost?
With this committee, you're appointed, then they, we do us RFP and get a firm to come in and help. Will this committee work with that firm?
Yes, sir.
Will they work to do this, and they'd be kind of facilitators, so to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The committee would be, would manage the process, if you will.
Manage, okay.
Chuck, I'm not exactly sure what the cost of that would be, but it would, if we, if we move forward, it would require an amendment to our current budget, correct?
Well, any, yes, sir. I mean, anything going forward, they would come in and present?
It depends. You know, we did put some funding in our parks budget for the parks plan. You know, that would be a priority to get that complete. We, we pursue grants with that part, with that plan, and we have to have a plan to pursue certain grants, so that would be the priority. So that funding could be used to, to begin the process in the summer. Then we'd have a better handle on what that cost would be, and in the budget process, we could fund it on into the next year. This is a 12 to 18-month process. It's not a, it's not a short-term process, so we would have an idea of cost of what we'd have to prepare for in the next budget if, if council so choose.
Okay.
And we could negotiate that out over a period of time.
Depending on what council wants to have in that plan. As he pointed out, you can have a myriad of things. Some we already have, some we'd need to create and get it together. So, excuse me. So that's the purpose of bringing these consultants in with the RFP process, and we'll have an idea of that.
Right.
But it's a long-term project.
Right. The Swedes?
So this time, and I'm, I'm thinking back to our conversation we had earlier this week about it. We really need to kind of proceed and start with the parks aspect, because from what I'm understanding, there's going to be some additional funding coming down. Federal funding for the parks again? Is it time for that funding again?
Well, it hasn't, it's, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department provides the funding. It hasn't been well-funded the last two sessions. We anticipate in the next biennium that may change, or we hope it may change in the future. So we want to be prepared to pursue that if it's available, so.
And we have to update it.
And part of that is having an updated plan. Similar to our transportation plans, we have to have things within our MTP to pursue funding, so, so those things that we, so that we don't miss any opportunities, we would make the focus of the, of the plan, so...
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
Good job.
Thank you.
Council have a consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda to pull for separate consideration? Mr. Allen?
Two short questions.
Two short questions?
Yes, sir.
You've never been short in your life. Okay, good. I mean, of whom do you want to ask those questions?
Well, the first one's Item E, Harris Computer Corporation of Ontario, Canada.
That's Kimberly Adams. Why, well, okay, there's Kimberly.
Let me just... Just, just a question here. Do we have to go to Canada to find somebody that can help us with our computers?
No, they're our current provider. We currently have their system, and so it's just an upgrade to the current system that we have.
Did we buy it out of Canada originally?
Yes.
Wasn't anybody in the United States that could furnish it?
I wasn't involved in that process. I'm not fully aware, but they are our current provider.
Okay.
What else?
When we get to the...
Thank you, Kim.
To the vehicle purchasing...
Item...
Item J.
Okay.
Could we have another, I know we've discussed this many times before, could we have another run-through on the 5% preference for local?
Let, let me suggest, Sidney, that what we'll do, can we just pull, because that's a good point, because I want to, I want to ask some questions on that also.
Okay.
So I'll ask council if we can pull Item J for separate consideration, but may I have a motion on all the other items?
So moved.
Have a motion. Second in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. So let's come back to Item J. Mr. Allen?
Thank you.
Okay, well, we, we're, we're now talking about Item J, so did you have a question?
Oh, okay. Yes. Well, it has to do with the 5% policy, and could we have another explanation on the 5% priority policy?
Yes, sir. As I understand it, it's vendors within the city limits of Longview. They get a 5% preference.
So in other words, their price can be 5% higher than an outside vendor and will buy locally?
That's correct, yes.
And does that include ETJ, or is that just city limits?
City limits only.
City limits only?
Yeah. And, and I, I did receive a call yesterday from a local vendor that's in the ETJ, and I really had thought that a number of years ago, several years ago, that we had addressed that to include the ETJ. However, that was not the case. What we did do, I think Mr. Frost represented us at the last legislative session, was to go back and try to have a, an amendment to the current state statute that would allow you to use your ETJ. I mean, a lot of the businesses in our ETJ, people live in Longview, they spend money in Longview, and should be afforded the same opportunity, you know, as, as people inside the city limits. But we're going to have to address that again this legislative session. It died in committee last time, as I understand.
That's right.
Mr. Frost?
The metropolitan areas are against this. They will not, they don't go for it. One of the legislators from Dallas that headed up the committee, he blocked it, killed it. But they don't, they don't want it. So we might go back and put, maybe put a populational cap on, say, everything below 125,000 people or something like that.
Yeah, have, have the...
But it is a state regulation.
That's right. No, it's a state regulation.
Senator, Senator Eltif took it.
Okay.
We called him, and he took it all the way through the process.
Okay.
And, and they got knocked down in the committee.
Okay. Any other questions on that? If not, may I have a motion on Item J?
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. All right, we'll go to our zoning items. Item A, public hearing to consider application PD 12-15. Mikey, where you been, man?
Sorry, it's been a little late. I had leadership problems today.
Man, you come running through the door, you hair...
Had to make a grand entrance.
A granny. Think you'd be riding a Harley or something, man. Where's your, where's your Christmas hat? You want to borrow Mr., you want to borrow Mr. Sims?
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Michael.
Wrong presentation. The applicant for PD 12-15, Mr. Tom Davis, is requesting a rezone from single-family SF4 to planned development, single-family detached. This is an area that was rezoned, single-family, a number of months ago. However, when they started laying out the design of the subdivision, they realized that they needed to make some changes in the setbacks and so forth, so they're back with planned development status. One of the things that they are going to be adding in addition to the subdivision is soon, with the planned development, will be sidewalks and walking trails to accommodate the reduced front setback. Also, it will be two-and-a-half-story minimum, and the minimum house size will be 2,200 square feet, as opposed to the SF4, which would have been 1,000. So there's some trade-offs there with getting a reduced setback. They're going to make it a little bit nicer. Be happy to answer any questions. P&amp;Z and staff do recommend approval.
Questions, Mr. Shirley? If not, this item requires a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I have a speaker card from Richard Henson. Did you want to speak to this item, or just here to answer questions? Okay. Any questions of Mr. Henson? Okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak that didn't fill out a speaker card? If not, the public hearing is closed. Council may have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? A second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item B, public hearing to consider application Z 12-12.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is Premier Management. They are requesting to rezone from single-family 4 to general retail. Let me move to my map. There we go. These two lots, they're on East George Ritchie Road. This is to facilitate future redevelopment of that area. It is adjacent to a large tract of land that they anticipate they'll develop with. Currently, there are single-family homes that they'll continue to operate as rental property until which time there's development opportunity. They're just doing some proactive rezoning for development of this area. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. P&amp;Z and staff do recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council questions, Mr. Shirley? Mr. Allen?
The two, the two homes that are currently occupied, are they, do they, are they owned by the developer, or do they own by, I mean, who owns their...
Yes, Premier Management owns those properties. They do own them.
Mr. Shirley, what's their intent with the property?
Some sort of retail development. At this point, they don't have any kind of plans that I'm aware of. It's just on a purely speculative basis. I'll move...
Isn't a lot of talk about a convenience store, gas station-type setup? Is that what they're talking about?
You know, honestly, I've not had those conversations with them.
Right. Not or by, no one's called me about it, just...
You know, they do own the property, if I can get this house to go backwards. This tract of land here, they do own a portion of it that's adjacent, so I think they are kind of looking at something bigger like that, maybe, you know. I, I don't know if multifamily is really appropriate at this time. We're kind of getting close to build-out, but that's something that's potential. You know, some sort of retail, you know, we've had some redevelopment along Gilmore Road that's really worked out well. You know, with George Ritchie, the expansion going on there, you know, I think it's going to, going to let us have some real nice opportunities there.
It's the next Fourth Street corner with the loop. Watching 20 years, that thing will be bustling. Okay, any other questions, Mr. Shirley? If not, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards. Is anyone here like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item C, consider application Z 12-13.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant, Stephen Lane, Sr., is requesting to rezone from heavy commercial to single-family 5, basically downzoning. This is an area that is, is surrounded by commercial zoning. If you look at the aerial, you have, along Marbly at least, you have retail and commercial development. This is on the backside of the Catfish King. And what they're planning on doing is subdividing this property into three residential lots and taking advantage of our South Longview incentive program, the SLIP program, which offers incentives for owner-occupied, single-family housing. And, and just through our conversations with the developer, we just felt it was appropriate to downzone it to protect that integrity of the program for the single-family, so that down the road, a business couldn't come in and utilize the property. And this is an area that although it is fronting Green Street and does have some traffic, it is near a lot of residential that's established, so I don't think it would be detrimental to the area.
Questions?
The question was why you were downsizing it, but to protect the residential plan, yes.
Okay. This, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item D, consider ordinance amending Article 26 of the historic preservation of the city of Longview.
Thank you, Mayor. As you may remember, Article 27, the historic preservation component of our zoning ordinance, we adopted, I believe, a little over a year ago, and that was at, at the recommendation of our historic preservation task force. Through the process, it enabled us to create a historic preservation commission, which we've been meeting since March, I believe. Through that process, one of the recommendations was to apply for the certified local government status through the Texas Historic Commission. Through that process and putting together that application, we've been coordinating with the state coordinator. Part of the process is for them to review our ordinance. They have kind of a model. If you remember, we talked about that when we went through this process before. Since then, they have a new coordinator, and they've kind of added some requirements of the ordinance component, and that's why we're here today, is just to amend the ordinance to, to meet their requirements. Nothing to do with how we designate properties or the criteria for those properties. It's more just how some of the, the commission's responsibilities dealing with coordination with the state, basically being more accountable to let them know what's going on with local properties. Also adding a component that, because of the, the board membership requiring specific background and professional certifications, if we can't attain those, that, that would allow us to hire a consultant to guide the, the board in decisions as needed. Also allowing a volunteer to be designated as historic preservation officer if there's no one there that could fill that obligation. So just basically minor housekeeping issues, and also adding some historic preservation definitions that they like to see. So we do recommend approval, and this is in order for us to apply for the cert, certified local government status, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Shirley? Okay, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Is anyone like to speak to this matter? You're not going to speak to this matter? I'm just kidding.
I did.
You did? Okay, Ms. Victoria is in the house.
And I would like to recognize a few of our...
Please do, please.
Commission members that are with us.
Please, please.
If you all like to stand and show your support for what we're doing. I know a couple of them couldn't be here, but our chairman and Ms. Wilson are here to support them.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Council may have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? A second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, then the next item is an action item. Consider resolution authorizing developer participation. I'm not going to read that entire thing. Mrs. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor. This is basically to allow the city to enter into a developer participation agreement. This is something that we did about a year ago and I'll move to my slide. The, the property owner at that time requested permission to cross part of the city park and we, we were granted authority to enter into a developer participation agreement. Since then, some of the, the things have changed with the property, some of the floodplain boundaries have been reduced, allowing us to look at extending Fourth Street. And so, that's what we're here to do, is to do a new developer participation agreement that would allow us to grant access to cross the, in the same location, Northern Hensley Park and then also here at the Fourth Street extension where, where it's a little piece of the park. And these are both areas that the Parks Board has looked at and approved and recommended approval for that, looking at how that would benefit the park in the future, the future area with the growth of Longview moving north. This would open up 50 acres for development that would benefit the city and things going on at the park. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Hill, some of the discussions about a new animal shelter location, does that road go, go right through that piece of property that's being discussed?
The road.
On the north?
On the north. The road was already kind of planned when the original animal shelter discussions were taking place and at that time, when we discussed the animal shelter at the Hensley Park location, that was going to serve as the entrance with the driveway coming south into the animal shelter.
So, the six acres or so that's been talked about, that would be north of where this road comes in?
South.
South, okay.
If you look right here, this, this portion right here is the city park and then it narrows right here. It's just a very, it's like 200 feet, I believe.
Okay.
It's in an area that's really unusable, but it would be north of where that, that project site would be.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, sir. Garrett?
Mr. Shirley, so that, that road, it goes behind the Hensley Park?
Yes, and this, this right here is a schematic that shows kind of what they're, what they're projecting to do. It would, it would tie in here at the existing Fourth Street signal, come across the park property and then we'd try to get it to the center of the property as quickly as possible as we can within our engineering requirements and then it would, it would follow north of the property and then tie back over into 259.
So, it actually picks up there at Fourth Street and what's the, what's the name of that other street, Mr. Shirley?
Fourth Street and Hawkins Parkway.
Okay, Hawkins Parkway. It picks up right there at that light and it goes across, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That should solve some congestion problems there also, Mr. Mayor.
It could.
Could possibly.
I've, I've heard from the Good Shepherd Institute.
Yes.
That has lots of traffic issues right now and there's a chance that they may be able to tie into this road to help them with their traffic congestion. So, there's a lot of, plus you're developing some property that sat, that has sat there for quite a long time, so it may, may open up some new avenues for development there as well. It has been.
And with, with tying into the signal, it's better than the alternative of having this tie-in to Hawkins approximately 200 feet down from there, because that was the original plan, was for this to just tie in approximately in this location and that would be unsignaled and that just causes even more concern.
We've got too much of that now.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion? Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item B, considering ordinance approving the acquisition of property at 411 American Legion Boulevard. Who's going to, Mr. Willard, you've got that.
Mayor and council, this is the item for your consideration to approve the property at 411 American Legion, which is the Texas National Guard Armory Building. The state of Texas has a mandate from the legislature to sell those properties all across the state and they have given us the opportunity to purchase that. We've been leasing it for the last several years, used for primarily the Longview Fire Department. It's used, it's an 18,000-square-foot building and we use a lot of it for our emergency operations center, storage facility for disaster materials. We also use it for a lot of classroom space for our fire department training and other offices there also. So, we felt like it is the prudent thing for us to do to go forward with that purchase and we'd ask for you to grant that to us tonight to proceed.
Okay. Questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Allen?
Part of the property, isn't it currently we use for the city park or is it the?
Part of the property, that was deeded from the city of Longview to the state, I think in 1957 or some, 52, somewhere back there and part of the, the park, Teague Park property is in that original deed and so that would be another advantageous.
So, what we're, what we're purchasing here is legal right to a, to part of the property that's, we use for park now.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, a second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item C, consider ordinance amending the city of Longview 2012-2013 budget. Mr. Willard?
Mayor and council, this is, the $460,000 is the purchase price for the facility. That is generated from a certified appraisal that the state of Texas paid for, for that property and we're asking that you amend our budget to allow us the funds to purchase the building in that amount.
Questions?
You might.
Mr. Frost?
Lead Co. is part of it, too.
Yes, sir. Lead Co. at their board meeting last week, their November meeting, they voted to participate with the city of Longview in the purchase of this building in the amount of $300,000. So, we want to certainly thank them for their participation in this project as well. So, the $460,000 is the total amount, 160,000 of city, general fund surplus money and then 300,000 by Lead Co.
Mr. Manley?
Again, shows a great partnership between the city and Lead Co. We've done this several times before, so I want to thank Lead Co. for stepping up and getting involved in this. Secondly, I think it's important for us to add, this $460,000 seems like a lot of money